And why don't we go, with board's permission, right back into public participation. There's a couple that have come up since then, and then we'll get back to item nine. Is that okay?
Yes.
So, Mertz?
Okay. The first person to speak will be Christopher White, and then after him, Richard Smith, and after that, State Senator Burt Johnson. Is Christopher White here?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I couldn't see you.
Okay, it's right here?
Yes, sir.
All right. Okay. Now. Good afternoon, members of the Honorable Michigan State Board of Education. My name is Christopher White. I'm the co-chair of the Coalition to Restore Hope to Detroit Public Schools, Coalition to Restore Hope to DPS. I have to my left 1,160 requests from various parents from various schools to reconvene the IEP. What we found is that in a lot of these schools, procedures weren't explained to them properly. So, the bottom line is that the demand is there, and it goes into the topic of the Emergency Financial Manager's plan to lay off 88 bus attendants that service our special needs population. We all have an understanding that the Constitution delegates the leadership and general supervision over all public education, including adult education instructional programs in state institutions, except those that are granting bachelorette degrees to this honorable body here. We also understand that Detroit Public Schools is a creature of the state. That is best displayed in the fact that we do have the Emergency Financial Manager whose contract is with the state of Michigan. So, we, it's our position that the Detroit Public School System is a creature of the state, and that has been displayed and determined in several different cases and so forth. And it's also our position that because Mr. Bob's contract is with the state of Michigan, that he is a state officer. And when you read his contract, it clearly states that he's accountable to the State Superintendent. It clearly reads that the Emergency Financial Manager shall abide by all laws and requirements governing school districts. The Emergency Financial Manager is accountable to the Superintendent of Public Instruction shall adhere to the direction of the Superintendent of Public Instruction or his designee on matters relating to financial information, submissions, tracking, and organization. It further states that the Emergency Financial Manager shall make himself available upon request of the Superintendent of Public Instruction or his designee for meeting status reports or for any other reason related to the duties, his duties as Emergency Financial Manager. With that being said, we call on you to bring him in, because he clearly reports to you, and we ask that you direct him to resend those layoffs of the bus attendants. And we do this because we, after, we see a demand is there, that's number one, until we question the legality of it. And we all know, after a 16-month legal battle over who has control of academics, the state, nor the district, or any of the parents, we cannot afford to have any more marathon legal sessions. So, per the contract and per the responsibility of Public Act 72, he reports directly to you, Mr. Flanagan. And we first applaud you for oversight on up to $5 million fine on special education. So, for this to be taking place in the face of that, it shows that we have a very serious problem here when it comes to the management-style Emergency Financial Manager. We're also aware of the fact that you all have a document called "Reforms Restructuring of Revenues," and it's recommendations for the ways that you can reform school districts. And in your documents, you clearly state that integration of special education and general education administrative functions in silos saves time and money, and we also deal with integration of school improvement plans to avoid duplications of curriculum and so forth. Doesn't say anything in there about getting rid of bus attendants and so forth. So, we feel that the decision that the Emergency Financial Manager has made to even attempt to issue layoff notices to bus attendants that service our most vulnerable population is counter the direction of this body as stated in the ways to reform a public school district. And finally, when looking at the 2010 single audit that was just released, you will find that you have repeat offenses in budgeting, you have repeat offenses in early education and Head Start, repeat offenses in procurement and bids, questionable bids and violations of state policies that determine the threshold of how bids are conducted. So, when you look at that, we feel that it's time for this to come to an end. We now know that even though he does not have academic control, he's still exercising academic workshops, despite of a judge's order. We now know that he has drawn up a settlement agreement, even though a decision has been made, to try to still select and determine the title and the direction of a general superintendent and so forth. So, he is flowing in the face of the law and what our state should be about long enough, and it's time for that to come to an end. So, when you take a look at the single audits, when you take a look at the fact that you all have placed up to a $5 million withholding for violation of special education policies, and the fact that we do have, and even though they may not have filled out some of the proper forms, when you're told that your, when you're told that your child is going to lose a bus attendant, or when you're told that something is tragic, that this is going to happen, you will panic. So, we have 1,160 of these forms. If I can leave them with somebody, some of their phone numbers, but they're all broken down by schools. And finally, I'll conclude, I have a son with autism, and I determined that he had autism after having him diagnosed at two years old. And now, because of the proper counseling and therapy, and after five years of therapy, we now have him going to class at Charles Wright Academy, where he spends half the day in the mainstream regular education class, another half the day in a special needs ASD class. In addition to that, we make sure that our regular ed students spend some time in the ASD class, too, so it's a fair exchange. So, there's a proper way to do mainstreaming, and you don't just slam children into each other with no proper planning. And that's one of the fallacies of the academic plan they developed.
Seconds, please.
Okay. That's one of the fallacies of the academic plan that he developed. It doesn't have anything to do with special education. So, I'd like to take the time to thank you all for allowing me to speak and allowed me to go a little bit over the time. And per the contract and everything, I hope that you bring him in, talk to him, and have him resend those layoffs. Thank you very much.
Before you invite the next guest.
Sir, would you want me to speak, though?
No, no. Well, yeah. What I didn't want to do is engage in a...
Thank you.
I didn't want to engage in a discussion, but I do think, sir, I just, please have a seat out. I just wanted to mention that we had an Attorney General's opinion based on PA 72, and basically my role is limited to the deficit elimination plan. Some of the aspects related to title money, which we're watching closely in terms of, we've disapproved many of the title, but it's really not as broad. I just wanted to, for the record, say it's not quite as broad as it sounds like in that reading. So, as State Superintendent, I, my authority with Robert Bob is limited. And then, secondly, as you know, and I think it's in that contract also, the remedy of either renewal or release is strictly the governor's. It's not mine, it's not the state board's, but our authority is strictly related to the academic, I'm sorry, to the financial side, specifically the deficit elimination plan and that work. That was interpretation we received after the ifter was taken over, in terms of the financial manager was placed in. Thank you.
Richard Smith, please.
I'm, I mean, I am here on, as a parent, I have a daughter that goes to Michigan School for the deaf at MSD. I was up, I have a couple complaints here. One is that the school isn't following the Fripa law. I have a letter, I've given a letter up there, where I have sent a letter to them and asking them back in November that they send me. It says, "I would also like a copy of Danielle's class schedules, her teachers', and also a copy of papers that go home with her, including the papers from the teachers." I haven't received anything from them as far as any of that goes. When I, when I first started going to the school, actually, before my divorce, I was always going to the school, and there was no problems. And then, after the divorce was finalized, when I started to go into the school again, they had told me that when I come there, I need to give them notice that I'm going to be there, and I said, "No problem." So, I started doing that. After a couple of times of that, they told me I had to give them a 24-hour notice and have a chaperone, so I did that. And then, they told me that all of this, I had to do all this in writing, which I didn't have any problem with, so I started doing that. I followed all the rules that I would, that they wanted me to do, to keep going and see my daughter at the school activities, and now they're telling me that I'm no longer allowed on the campus. I feel a lot of this is because my ex-wife works there and has a fit every time that I go to my daughter's activities, because about two to three days after this happens, I hear from the school. Now, in the spring of, in the spring of 2010, the day started, the day, the day started, my mom took me over to parent-teacher conference. As I was waiting in the office, or while she was waiting in the office, I went back for the conference. She had asked to see her grandson that worked at the school, which was my son. And there, David Sanderson said that my mom was my responsibility, therefore, I got in trouble for this. He told me it was an inappropriate, it was my inappropriate conduct for letting my mom do this. Then, we left, we were gone for about an hour, hour and a half, we came back for the sports banquet. My chaperone was waiting for me. We went in, sat down with the Martin family that I know, and across the room from my ex-wife and daughter. When it was all finished, I went over to talk to my daughter, and her mother had gotten involved and started yelling and screaming at me, and my chaperone told me that it was time for me to go. So, I did. About a week or less, I received a letter from the school district, from the school, telling me that I was no longer allowed on the school grounds to do, to do, to do with my inappropriate, inappropriate conduct and behavior. And they can't tell me what I did wrong, besides, the one thing they're trying to say is inappropriate conduct of my mom to ask them to see my son. And the other thing they're saying is, I had asked the Martin family, their son was a friend of my daughter's, and they say that I asked him to go talk to Danielle for me. And I didn't, his dad said, "Would you go ask Danielle if she'd come over and talk to her dad?" So, I did nothing wrong, I sat there. And the only thing I did is I went over and talked to her, and I left. My chaperones at the school have been Todd Whisker and Michael Clinton both times I've been there, either time I've been there, it's been one of those. And basically, you know, I just, I just want to try to stay, stay in touch, see what's going on with my daughter, go to her sports events. As it is, she graduates this year, and they're telling me I can't even go to her graduation because it's on the school campus. I've got two letters there. I got the one letter that they sent me back, back in June after the sporting event, and then I got the one letter, I got a letter here that I had sent in October, I sent to the school, and then I got one here on November 7th that I had sent. They got, they got the Attorney General's Office involved, which is with Joshua Smith as their attorney down there. I've sent letters to both of them, and they're telling me that they're, they don't have to tell me anything. I said, "Why can't I go back to the school?" And they're saying, you know, I said, "What was my inappropriate behavior?" And they're saying, "Well, we got to look at the safety of the kids," which I do understand that, but where am I at harm? You know, if I have, if I have a chaperone there, what am I going to do? They got my, you know, I, they got security cameras all over the school district, I mean, all over through the whole school. What am I going to do?
Are these copies, sir, of that?
Yes.
And we keep these, then?
Yep, yep. I also have, I also have another set of copies, if you guys would like them.
It's the same?
It's the same thing, but...
Same, I think we're fine, then.
Okay. But, yeah, that's basically the same thing. So, I just, I was just hoping to maybe get some answers from you. I mean, I know you can't give answers today, but just hopefully something happens about it, so I can try to get something done to see my daughter's, you know, activities, or at least go to her graduation by the end of the year.
We'll look into this, sir. We have the right copies.
All right. Appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. The next speaker is State Senator Burt Johnson.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Happy New Year to everybody, I won't be long. I'm Burt Johnson, State Senator from the city of Detroit. I was born and raised in the city of Detroit, and although we've historically had a very robust public school system, my parents saw fit, as they were Catholic schoolchildren, to educate myself and my siblings in the Catholic school system. And so, I went to Mercy and Ramona Soree, I also went to St. Teresa-Jezu, and eventually U D High, and then went on to U D Mercy. And so, you know, I kind of grew up in the city of Detroit with a bit of duality as it related to the public school system, because frankly, I lived at Dexter and Davidson Avenue, and although I went to Catholic schools, I came right back home, and all of my friends were essentially public school children. And I happen to think that a large part of what's taking place, or I should say, not taking place, related to education in the city of Detroit is due in part to the fact that we've had some, some real sectors of education sort of subtract from the city. For instance, the Catholics are really in a subtraction mode as it relates to education in the city of Detroit. And I think with respect to what's been left, if you will, a number of people are trying to figure out, what does it really mean to try to educate people in the city of Detroit? And what does that model look like? Is it, is it monolithic? Is it diverse? But I think everybody's really grappling with that. Moving forward, as I became a state representative, I don't think any of us quibbled with the fact that when our governor, our last governor, Grant Holm, decided that after a serious review, and I'm sure the, Mr. Flanagan, you were a part of that, and I should also say that I enjoy a very good relationship with Mr. Flanagan, and it's been a real pleasure to work with you, and I look forward to doing more great things, as I do with this board. But as the governor decided, in her wisdom, that the city of Detroit's public school system was in a downturn, and that the finances were such, that we commanded a Emergency Financial Manager, I don't think any of the Detroit legislators quibbled with that. And so, we had some serious discussion and some meetings, and at that time, I was chair of our delegation, we accepted the assertion of the governor. And there was a search performed, there was a big committee, as you know, that was put together, and a lot of folks tried to make sure that the man or the woman that was brought to the table had not just a diversity of background related to economics, but also somebody who could appreciate the political climate in the city of Detroit, understanding that, to some degree, the city and its membership are really skeptical of what the state will or won't do on its part related to education. We've had a takeover. People feel as though, when the takeover subsided and we got the school district back under local control, that there was too much debt heaped upon the city, and you've heard these arguments back and forth, and you could continue to hear them. But today, I feel as though the, this meeting is really the culmination of a number of events that have occurred under the current Emergency Financial Manager, and I make no bones about the fact that I have called on him publicly to cease and desist with some action and to turn back some of his activity, and I've gotten to a place now where I've asked him to resign. And that doesn't mean that I believe at some point that the school district is financially healthy and doesn't demand someone of the same ilk to help with the finances. What I believe to this point, and I think the facts elicited in this letter, in this particular instance, as we talk about children who are special needs children, show or depict is a dictator that, to some degree, has lost his benevolence. And in the city of Detroit, and I've had a lot of conversations with a lot of parents, I'm one of those legislators who believes that you are in the community and of the community, and should be available to the community, whether what they have to say to you is good or bad. And so, I've heard it from all sides. The social media sites I engage in have given me tons of information and feedback. I've met with principals, teachers, counselors, janitors, you know, folks who turn the light switches on and off, and I've met, most importantly, with the students. And what I get back from them, and I've always told these same people, that the special needs children in the city of Detroit more especially, that this was going to be the issue that on Robert Bob's watch would crystallize into a mountain that I didn't think he could overcome, because of what I saw him initially doing related to special needs children. I have two children, two boys, in the public school system in the city of Detroit, and I trust our system, to the extent that I trust myself to be a part of the system and to try to be a change agent there. And so, while I know we have issues, I know that there's some, there's some good still in this system that can be pulled out. Simply put on this issue, I think the policies being pushed by the Emergency Financial Manager pose more a risk to special needs children, and that risk can be measured whether you're talking about children who are not being picked up, who are not being picked up on time, who are not being delivered to their to and fro on time, and in this instance, where we've got people who are being taken off the buses, whose main duty is to see to it that these students are kept safe. And I don't think that when you consider, you know, I've looked at Robert Bob's argument, that the IEP sort of substantiates the need or the lack thereof for these attendants who are on the bus. I don't think that the average parent, and I know a few, who are heavily involved in the IEP process, such that they're making sure that their children are really being looked after by whomever's going to have their hands on them. I don't think the average parent who's dealing with special needs instances, who might be dealing with insurance problems, basic monetary problems at the house, may or may not have a spouse or someone that can support them in that endeavor, and frankly, the largesse of what is the issue with their particular child, I don't think that person is skilled enough to determine, as they fill out information in the first set of IEP applications, if you will, to really understand how to categorize their problems such that if an attendant is really needed, it would be subsequently provided. And everything in the city of Detroit cannot simply boil down to dollars and cents. There's a human component that I don't think any of us can ignore, and as elected officials, we have a sworn duty to pay attention to what happens to our constituents, and when it comes to the parents and the special needs children, I just think that they boast what's really happening in our system. You could say you're cutting X amount of things to create X amount of savings, and it looks like, you know, there's a bottom line number at the end of the day. And I think perhaps, and it's no disrespect to folks who have to review those documents, maybe it makes sense. But when you look at the human capital that is not being protected by virtue of some of the decisions being made, and when you look at the number of people who are willing to not just complain, but to bring their complaints this far, and to have open-ended discussions, and accept whatever the findings by this body will be, I think you have to take those things into account. So, today, in the last sentence, I just wanted to come and register my disservice, or my displeasure, that is, with the service that we're being provided in the city of Detroit. And I'm not one of those folks who says, you know, everything's bad, and, you know, we're the only right thing in town, because we're not. And we got a lot of work to do, and I'll be the first to tell you that, whatever this body decides, as it relates to how it deals with the gentleman who's in the city of Detroit as EFM, I'm going to continue to be willing to work with you, as I am our school superintendent, to get this thing right. It's one of the reasons that I authored the bills with our chairman, Tim Melton, on reform, and I stand by him. I think it created groundwork, it was good groundwork, if you will, to give us an opportunity to be in front of the federal government, make our case the right way. We didn't get the money, fine, we got to keep moving on. And there are more reforms that need to be in place, but I think it's high time that the gentleman who's been appointed be let go, and we get a new one. And I think that person really needs to understand his or her duties as promulgated under Public Act 72, if it stays the same or if, in fact, it changes. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
And thanks, Senator, for mentioning 72. I know we've talked about that, but it does need quite a revision.
Thank you.
Appreciate your help in that regard. We're done?
Oh. And the public participation, yes.
Well, no, sir, please. If you're...
Oh.
Thank you very much.
That's okay.
My name is John Lumbur. I'm a newly elected representative in the 5th District, which also includes Detroit, and also the cities of Highland Park and Hampton. And I'm here also to voice my concern over some of the issues around Public Act 72. Representative Burt Johnson, I think that, sorry, Senator, no, Burt Johnson, I think did a fantastic job of articulating the issues behind it. And so, instead of reiterating those things, I'll just say that I think that it's incumbent upon us as elected officials to, when you hear something, when you see something, to act upon it in a way that you see appropriate. Everyone, it's up for interpretation in everyone's eyes, what's the best thing to do in Detroit, but I just put caution to the wind and say that there is policy that's being shaped. And on a day-to-day basis, decisions are being made in and around the Public Act 72, in and around how emergency financial managers are supposed to behave, or the decisions that they're going to make, and some of the actions that they take. And today, or coming this week, our Emergency Financial Manager in the Detroit Public School is going to take action that pertains to special needs students. I look at the future of Michigan, I look at the education question as it is presented to us, and I say, there are some 30 or 40 districts that are going to come upon this question of financial insolvency. And I say that as, as it deals with Detroit, we must be the miner's canary, if you will, the test subject for this public act, and how Emergency Financial Managers are going to deal with school districts, as well as parents and the students who are serviced by those districts. And what I say is, let us all make sure that we weigh in, so that the policy is set, and that across the state, as people approach this question, maybe more districts come into question of Public Act 72. Good things will happen. Students will be educated and come out of the controversy, and I think, you know, some of the political fray that has happened in Detroit, I think can be assuaged to a certain extent, so that it doesn't happen again. I think that it's very disruptive, I think, if anything, to the process. And I think that my constituents have voiced that, and that it's very difficult for students to learn in the political environment that we're promulgating. And so, I just want to say that, please, take this situation seriously and weigh in, however you feel, so that we can all begin to set positive public policy in the area of education. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Congratulations on your election.
Good luck.
Thank you all, and I think we'll go back, then, to the minutes. Is that the...
[inaudible]
Yeah. Why don't we, yes. Our report is one. So, approval of State Board of Education minutes. Can I, this is from December 7th?
Moved to approval.
John, supported by Kath, was it? Any, everyone okay with it? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same?
Mary Ann, are you on the phone?
No.
It's not. I was going to just postpone my report, so some of you who have a distance, but Kath, what would you like to, I have to donate that time to...
I would like to do something about responding to these presentations today, and Senator Johnson's presentation. I think as I've watched it, officials who do have a responsibility, and even if we just make a statement...
You're welcome to do. Let me see that.
I, it's very distressing to hear all these people's stories about not being included in the IEP. I think that's a blatant violation of the law, if that's the case. And I'm worried about the children being on, special ed kids being on buses without an aid. I think it's dangerous, it's obvious, been dangerous to at least one child, and could be to many. And I think we should at least make a statement urging Mr. Bob to reinstate those aids immediately.
First of all, just because you gentlemen weren't here, I don't think that, in the earlier, we did, that would be appropriate if you see fit also. We did say that we're going to investigate the IEP issues with our special ed division here. That is an authority that we do have, and there's certainly enough, as Kath's saying, there's enough evidence, or... there's enough evidence, or at least, shouldn't say evidence, but enough concern expressed today by a good number of people that it's worthy of that to make sure that, I think you touched on a key point, which is that sometimes folks may not know their rights under an IEP even if technically they're matched up with a bus. So that, that aside, but sure the board has the right...
They might not know that they're supposed to put it in writing, that they might just assume that their child has laid on the bus.
Right. That's the part, we'll get it, I'm very confident, we already have a meeting lined up this afternoon with our special ed folks to get...
That's good.
But I think if you would like to go beyond that, certainly...
Okay, I had another question. I read in the paper that Governor Snyder has agreed to extend Mr. Bob's contract to the end of the school year in June. I don't know if that's correct or not. It was in the paper, that doesn't mean it's true, so I, I don't know. But I know that there's enough concern among people in Detroit that I've gotten calls about that they're not happy about that, obviously. And is there some way we can talk to him about, we have to let him know about what's going on here?
Him being the governor or him being Robert Bob?
The governor.
Well...
John.
And Robert Bob.
If you're able to investigate the special ed issue, I think appropriately, I think that makes a lot of sense. I do think that there is this large, larger issue of, my sense is that the governor's going to, he both need to and want to do something about what's the future path for Detroit, Robert Bob, the fiscal situation there. I think, and you'll be looking to Mike for advice, I hope, I think we do need to, if we can, say something, I would look to our Detroit members, we have four on the board, for guidance on how can we constructively inform the agenda for what is the path forward for Detroit, both leadership and fiscal path. Or we can wait to see what the governor comes up with, but I think that's, or somehow talk more together with him as he offered. So it's not easy. I'm just saying, and I'm looking for help, on how we constructively promote a Detroit fiscal and leadership agenda to the best of our ability.
I think, John, based on the governor being here this morning, he certainly did open the possibility of the board giving advice, if that's the right word, and saying, based on this and based on some of these issues, how you might feel about a renewal or not. I only know as much as you do about what I read in the paper, but my sense from that was that that, because he didn't choose to say apparently that he would renew them for a year, which would be customary, so it struck me as a way that, to get what John said together first, whatever the next step is, and needed a little more time. But I, I don't know that, I'm reading into that as much as you do. But I think especially based on his comments this morning, it's totally appropriate that the board weigh in on this issue in a way that you see fit, and it can be as specific as renewal or not, things of that nature.
Well, it's been very frustrating this last year when I know there were a lot of concerns and we didn't have the authority to do anything, and I was really frustrated by that, so...
Right. Well, I mean, it's one reason, I appreciate the senator's past work in the House and now in the Senate on 72, because I've also been in an awkward position, you know, and so I felt the need a half hour ago to clarify the interpretation that we got from the AG about my own authority there, which is actually quite limited. I did volunteer and without any ability to direct Robert Bob, but I did volunteer when I was asked. I didn't forget where it was, probably a scoubic or someone like that, and I said, no, if I were Robert Bob, I wouldn't appeal the academic issue. But I have no authority to force him to not appeal that. So I mean, we're all in a bit of limbo on that. I think ultimately it comes down to what the senator said, which is trying to get clarity from this past situation and a new PA 72.
Right.
But I do think it's totally appropriate, and especially since he opened the door this morning when he was with us, that the board could weigh in and say, here's our advice on at least a couple of these specific issues. Dan, did you have something, and Eileen and Nancy?
Two things, I think. Maybe it's more than two.
It's complicated stuff.
No, these are, these are, these are difficult, difficult issues. They're not difficult, this is a very difficult situation. I think it's probably the better framing, at least from where I sit. So I want to divorce the kind of short-term issue which has been raised today and which I think needs some pretty, if something is to be done, there's urgency there from the longer term, so what is the way forward for Detroit conversation? So this body has some opportunity, and certainly the four Detroit residents, I think, and a unique opportunity to deliberate on that and attempt to offer meaningful contribution to that conversation about what is the long-term way forward. And I think this body has a role to play in that conversation. There's an immediate issue which has been raised today which has to do with the safety of special ed students and the intention of the emergency financial manager to lay off aides on those buses. I don't know the specifics, I mean, I've read in the paper, the same thing that everyone else has read in the paper. It is admittedly a difficult situation in that the district is in tremendous financial distress, and at the same time, you can't ignore the needs of these students. And we have an obligation, frankly, as a state, if we're going to educate students, we have an obligation to actually educate them and to keep them safe. That would seem to require some faster action than this longer-term way forward, and I would encourage folks to reach out to the emergency financial manager, if you know him personally or his staff, and try and get a little more information about, about what is going on. And to see if there isn't some informal way that we can influence this decision. We're not, we don't, we obviously are not going to have enough information here today presented to us because we don't have Robert Bob or anyone from his staff here to tell us what, you know, what financial considerations are at stake or so on and so forth, we're just hearing it through the grapevine. But I think we've got a chance in our role to weigh in informally, and I'd encourage folks to do that. I certainly will be doing that, to try and get some more information and see if there isn't a way to remedy this immediate situation with perhaps less potential for detrimental impact on young people.
Good point. And I think, as I mentioned, we'll start today with our special ed folks, but I think it's a good suggestion to reach out to Bob, to start him thinking about his perspective on that and align the two. I think it was Eileen and Nancy.
And I would just add to Mr. Varner's comments that it's not just an opportunity, it's an obligation, because we are elected officials, we are statewide, and we're a venue for these problems and concerns that are arising. I'm really troubled by the special ed complaints. I'm troubled by a system that if this is true, keeps children from getting training that might be viable for their needs until they're 25, because we've got such limited resources. And I don't know if this is true or not, but it looks to me as if special ed in Detroit needs realignment on a large scale. And every, every person who comes in, in an emergency situation, whether you're a new superintendent for a regular district hired by State Board of Ed, for example, or some other situation, you walk into existing problems. I don't know how many of these existed before, but they're not problems that should exist for much longer, whether Mr. Bob is in charge or someone else is. So I think that if you can do what you are able to with the special ed folks with a long-term vision on this, you know, a short-term solution of just emergency situations, but whoever gets into that position, whether it's Mr. Bob or someone else, our eyes should be wide open on special ed, and we should be monitoring them.
Yes. I think it's worthy of comment. I didn't, I thought I saw Eleanor White, Director White, earlier. There she is, and I, I, not, I don't...
I somehow figured that you...
Yeah. Here, I'm ready to say, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, now I'm going to put you on the spot a little bit, but you were appropriately outspoken about some of these same issues, and maybe want to give a little bit of an update, not the specific issue of the IEP on the aides, but I mean in general, the special ed crisis in Detroit.
We have been actively involved in monitoring activities in Detroit since April of 2008. And so we are in Detroit for areas of non-compliance for IDEA, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act.
Oh, what's that?
So our current, we have actually two different monitoring teams, and they have two corrective action plans that they're working on. The first one is educating students in the least restrictive environment, because they have a low percentage of students with disabilities who are educated in the general education setting.
I think that's why she's having trouble hearing.
And that's because I wear hearing aids and I can hear myself very well. So did you catch the last part at all, or do...
No, I missed, I missed what you were directing in that direction.
Okay.
Part of it's that, darn.
Okay. The first area that we're in Detroit, the oldest area, I should say, we've been in Detroit since 2008, has been for the low percentage of students with disabilities educated in the least restrictive environment. We have a target area in our state that we would like to see about 55% of students with disabilities in any district educated in the general education setting. And I was streaming the board meeting this morning, and it talked about assessments, and that's how critical it is, because if students are in general education settings, the likelihood of being more successful in those statewide assessments is critical. The second area that we're in Detroit monitoring for is the high number of students with disabilities who are suspended beyond 10 school days. And we will again be visiting Detroit for the high number of students who are suspended beyond 10 school days, particularly those students who are African-American. So there are several areas that we monitor for, for Detroit Public Schools, and we do monitor, we respond to specific complaints. So complaints have to come through special education, have to be identified for a particular reason. So if a written complaint, it has to be written, anyone could write a complaint, but if a written complaint comes to our accountability office, we do follow up on those individual complaints. We have to monitor, we have to have authority to monitor for specific areas.
I think we kind of got enough of that, and if not, we have some news that we can get for specific. We had a number of things left in writing today, well, we have a thousand pages in one case, which, so I think it'll allow us to get at what Dan talked about, the more immediate and potentially safety issues. But I appreciate your coming up. I know our folks, as you know, are working and monitoring our meeting a little bit as they're in their offices, but I wanted to at least give you a flavor that Director White is on top of a lot of issues there and is, how can I say, this is up to the task, courageous, and has taken some real heat there from some of the staff. So I appreciate her efforts and wanted to say that. It is Eileen and then Nancy.
I just wanted to ask you one question, because some of these charges, these allegations, may be different than what you've seen. Do you feel that you have a good grasp of the breadth of issues going on in Detroit or that you're having to be relatively narrowly focused on things that have been documented?
Regarding the issue that was discussed today, I already have a policy response to discuss with Superintendent Flanagan after this meeting is over.
Well, she's on it. I mean, you're fair on it.
I would not have come upstairs if I didn't.
Well, that's, that's a step in the right direction. Some of it seems urgent to me, though, that we do something quickly about the safety issue.
Well, that's, this, you don't think this addresses it, that what was just discussed?
I don't know. Give it a shot.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, I think that's our intent through this action. The longer issue, as Dan described, is something the board is not only welcome to weigh in on, we should be encouraged to weigh in on, and I think it was really a good way that, John, I knew this intellectually, but I think it is good for folks to understand that half of our members reside in Detroit.
Right.
Certain image issue that doesn't necessarily correspond to that. I think it was Nancy, then John.
Yeah.
Then it looked like we're friends in Detroit.
I would definitely not. I think that to Kathleen's concern, I think that the governor left the door, I will say it again, left the door wide open for our comments, our concerns, our approach, and I think this is something that we should do, and I don't think that we're going to be able to sit here and pound out a response today before we leave. And so I would ask that our president put together either a response personally that we react to or that he work with those that could put together a response that would be directed not only to those who we spoke with or we heard from, I should say, today, but also to the governor's office, to the legislature, and to the people of the city of Detroit, and to Robert Bob. Because I think it's important that they do hear from us what we're thinking, rather than appearing to only hear and have no thought, because we all know that just isn't true. And I want to say one thing about my new seatmate, Dan Varner, that I think is going to be wonderful, is he also starts his sentences with "so."
He do. That's true. But I won't be doing any imitation. Why don't we go so far with that, Joseph? Thank you for your...
But would that help, Kathleen, if we did that?
Yeah, I would think we have to respond, and I would like to say it's fine for us to call Mr. Bob individually, but I think we as a board have to respond officially. And I don't think we can, we can wait too long to do it. I think we have to...
I was, I was going to...
There's a certain amount of urgency with this and decision-making to be made in the next month, but...
Well, I, I mean, you keep looking at me, I'm not sure what that means. That's what I'm trying to encourage, I think that is appropriate for the board, very appropriate.
There's two, there is the short-term, the special education issue, which we don't know the answer to that today. So we have to ask Mike and the team to investigate more what it is that's really going on and what we should do about it. And then I would like to ask the four Detroit members to collaborate on the kind of beginning articulation of what our encouragement advice to the governor on Detroit path forward is, if they're willing, and per Nancy's suggestion, perhaps begin to craft something. I assume you three are willing to help with that, and Mary Ann, but not exclusive for them, but I'm, maybe I'll tap somebody to quarterback that group later.
Yeah, okay.
Richard and then Cassandra.
Well, I have a somewhat differing perspective. First off, I appreciate it, do you want me to call you Dan or Daniel?
Please, Dan.
Dan. I appreciate Dan's distinction between the immediate special education issues and the long-term, what, which I think is the more significant one that we should be concerned with, what is the transition, what is, what is in the interest for Detroit's children going forward? Now, as a, as a former DPS parent and resident of Detroit, I've got lots of opinions. But Superintendent Flanagan, you're the expert, and I think really a recommendation along this line should come from you.
Absolutely.
I think that we will have our opinions, we'll have our questions, and so on and so forth, but the assessing of what is best for, what's the kind of leadership and what kind of mechanism, that leader's got to have the confidence of the, of the community. That's candidly, I think, what we've, what we've seen, that's the disjunct that we see here with Robert Bob and the group that came to meet with us. So I really think that needs to come from the professional, and then we, and then you the professional have to explain it to us laypeople, because if you can't explain it to a supportive board of laypeople, you're never going to be able to go public with it. So I think that's the way that it ought to be approached, and I'm willing to share opinions and share my fellow Detroiters' opinions, but I, I really think it needs to come from the expert and then try it out on us, on us board members.
I would suggest a, yes, totally interactive effort where, Mike, we want his advice as the expert, we want to share our opinion and wrestle with them in light of good expert advice from Mike and others. Ultimately, we want an aligned set of ideas, where the board's advice to the governor is the same and informed by Mike's advice and vice versa, and hopefully is shared then by the governor and others, to the degree we can all listen and learn from each other. I mean, that's the goal, is that we are not, we are aligned in terms of our idea set, and I think it's very helpful for us to certainly gather the great testimony we heard today, but also be, be informed by those board members who happen to be in Detroit with your opinions and facts, but also Mike's good sense of direction and others. So why don't we collaborate on this together in that way?
I don't often feel inadequate, but that's an area, no, actually, I mean that kind of seriously, but I do, this is a very complicated, we've learned a lot the last few years, there's, I think collaboration would be a good way, appreciate being included in that, and it's a reinvention probably is what we're going to start thinking about recommending. I mean, but I would, I would emphasize two concrete things. One is the one we talked about that Director White's going to be talking about today with us later, and then the other is specifically getting a different PA 72. That sounds bureaucratic, it's really not. I mean, it's just... I mean, it's just poorly worded, it's got contradictions in it, it's put us in this awkward spot of, are you in charge, are you not in charge? But that doesn't mean the broader thinking about what's next, because that is urgent. I know it's a little longer term, but it's urgent, and my guess would be that the governor is commentary this morning and what we've read in his, in his other speeches is very action-oriented, and I don't have any inside information on this, but I'm assuming is ready to start thinking very quickly about what the next step is. And that's why I'm surmising again, I don't have any information that, more than you do on this, but when I read the three months, and that told me that that wasn't meant to be the solution, that was meant to help him get something else in place before July 1. And I think we could contribute to that.
At the time, that made sense to me because, you know, rather than change in the middle of the semester, that made some sense, but there's so much unhappiness now, I'm not sure that that is the best solution, so I don't know.
You know, that could be his intention. He can't legally do it till March 1 anyway, so maybe he would have gotten advice, that might be a key, probably even faster, but that might be a thought in mind about the board's advice would be to be prior to, certainly prior to, well, prior to the March 1 time, if that's kind of a way to think about it. Thank Cassandra and then Eileen.
Well, you kind of stole my thunder, Mike. I was going to say that there, you know, I certainly appreciate the short-term urgency that we have here, but then with the longer-term needs, I was going to raise the issue that we as a board had agreed a few months ago to make a public statement about PA 72, which we did, and to, now that we have a new legislature to continue moving that discussion forward. I know that Mary Ann's been working on potentially doing some type of op-ed about the need for what do we want to see in a new PA 72, which is things that we've already outlined as a board, and, but if we can continue to push that conversation forward so that we don't end up with these court fights that we've seen over the last year and a half.
Right. Thank you. I think so. Eileen and then Dan.
You, sorry, me next?
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm on the end, you think I figured that one out. I too have a hearing problem and I have a bad time hearing anybody on the right side at all, so it's just one of those things I'm just, sorry.
There's a pun in there.
Not politically, right?
I was just concerned that the eye contact meant I was going to get another question.
It was Kathleen at the far end, who was having more trouble than I, you were doing fine. I, I want to make sure that I've heard or not heard this, knowing how short-staffed you are. Will we have a response back for the February meeting on the more?
Short-term. Oh, I think prior to that time, we'll have, we'll have a resolution and, because this, this is part of our charge. You know, I was trying to distinguish earlier when we had the public commentary, I was trying to gently say there's areas that we just don't have authority, even though we wish we did, but that is a clear one we have, as Eleanor said, you know, once there's an investigation opened, specifically when it's in writing, then it gives us a lot of authority. And there's, how can I say this? I mean, this is, this is regular business.
Regular business.
I mean, we get this, all the, we get severe charges, if that's the right word, regularly, as you might expect, from almost a couple million children out in the, in the state and the districts that represent them, the 4,000 schools. So, I'm very confident, I don't know what the solution is yet, but I, I'm very confident that our, our practices are in place, Eileen, to remedy that quickly.
She's calling you right now, so, sorry.
Welcome to AT&amp;T's teleconference service. Please enter your access code followed by the pound sign.
Was there any other discussion? Yes, Dan, please, sorry.
To join the conference as the host, press star, otherwise, press pound. Please enter your host password followed by the pound sign.
Call back into the other.
There are one participants on the call, including you. You are joining your conference as the host. For a menu of available commands, press star, pound.
That's how they make all their money, are all these things that add up minutes over a period of time to get directions from the computer.
Mary Ann, are you there?
Are you on the other line? All right, call in, okay.
I, I might have done us a disservice by framing only two issues. It seems to me really that there are three, and so let me be clearer about that. There's a longer-term way forward, there is the, what I would call the intermediate-term issues that are being investigated, then there's the very short-term issue of folks who will be laid off on Friday, and I'm not worried, I'm, let me be clear about this. The concern that I think was raised today was around the safety of the students that would be on those buses once those age are no longer present, which is an immediate issue. So, we have the immediate, the intermediate term, and the longer-term issue.
Good.
Thank you, Mary Ann. So, I'm encouraging folks to, who have a relationship with Robert Bob or his office, or even if you don't frankly, and you're just moved by it, so he, while he is not a publicly elected official, I think that part of, part of his work is to respond to public opinion. He's got a revenue problem in addition to an expense problem in DPS. He needs students to come to DPS, we need students to come to DPS if that district is to become financially solvent. And so, I think that he is sensitive to public opinion, maybe not as sensitive as he once was, but, but is sensitive to that. I'm not suggesting that we lobby Robert Bob. My, my point is just that if you have a relationship with him or someone in his office, there's an opportunity to get more information and perhaps influence the decision informally, if that's something that you're moved to do. As I said, I will be doing that. There's the intermediate-term issue, which I think we'll hear back on within the month, and then there's the longer-term issue of the way forward for Detroit. The, there's even, so, and the longer-term way forward for Detroit really has two parts. There is the Detroit, what is the solution in Detroit, and I think that we can weigh in on that. There is also the Public Act 72 legislation, which frankly does need to be addressed and rewritten. It, it's been suggested, and I think appropriately so, that other districts may very well face the kind of emergency or the kind of financial distress that will trigger the provisions in that act down the road. And to the extent that we, that this case, the Detroit case, has exposed weaknesses in that legislation, the way that it's written, it clearly, those, those weaknesses need to be resolved before, the sooner the better. And we've got a chance to influence that conversation too, so I think we should. I do think it's appropriate that anybody who wants to weigh in on the Detroit piece can and should. And I, in that, in that space, let me just suggest this, we alluded to this issue earlier, and I just want to put it on the table, I think it's important that these issues be made explicit. There are four Detroit residents on this board. The Detroit Public Schools student body is overwhelmingly African-American, however, and there's only one African-American member on this board. And that's not to suggest, so, we need to be cognizant of the fact that this board, in some respects, represents Detroit students and residents well, and in other respects may not represent Detroit students and residents so well. That's not to, we should do what is best for students, no matter what, but there is an appropriate way to do that work when, when our representation, when, when the community is not as well represented in this body as it might otherwise be. And I think it requires that we actually reach out to the community and get a little more input from them than we otherwise might. So, I'd encourage us, as we move forward in that conversation, to do that. Let's make sure that we hear from Detroiters, and in particular, black and brown Detroiters, about what they think needs to be done in order to save Detroit Public Schools, or in order to remedy the issue, the challenges that Detroit Public Schools faces. In the end, we'll make our own decision and our own recommendation, as we are charged to do, but it would be a mistake for us to assume that we have the answer.
In that spirit of openness, may I just say something that I kind of have been looking for an opportunity, and maybe this is.
Could you speak up a little, Mike?
Yes, if I could just take this opportunity, I've been looking for an opportunity and maybe this is the time. The way this Detroit experience has done a few things for me, it's certainly done the concrete one where PA 72 is broken, and we've tried to get it fixed and we've not been successful so far. The second one is that I remind myself every day that there are even, I don't think of this in terms of a K-12 system, I think our preschool kids are now clearly part of our charge. So, there's almost 2 million children kind of in our charge, and Detroit is 70,000 kids. And the danger of saying this is it can sound like I'm not concerned about Detroit, so let me finish, as you are, but I mean, I want to be able to finish this thought. And that is that if you take the kids that are in the circumstances that Detroit is in, throughout the state, there are hundreds of thousands of kids that are in that circumstance, largely African-American, surprisingly to me as a Brooklyn kid, rural, white also, and the biggest challenges are with these poor kids that come often unprepared. So, I think one of the beauties of a board that's represented more broadly is that how do we help the governor, the legislature, and then within our own decision-making authority, because we have a lot of that ourselves, reform a system that accommodates all those needs. And that's one reason, I think, for example, that this whole thing today on cut scores and moving more, as John has said, I think for a couple of years, the moving, as we have together said, that the proficiency model as opposed with outcomes, that's how we've gotten away from seat time to the degree we can. I'm a little concerned, honestly, about with, with the resources available, or should we really be in kind of the sanctions mode anymore, or should we be in a light-of-day, rethinking what the system should look like mode? But I say that very much as an advocate for the 70,000 kids that are in Detroit, just that from our point of view, it, it's a much broader umbrella, and when you add all of these kids with those needs. I was a superintendent in Farmington 20 years ago, and the image was we were this high-performing district. Trust me, out of 35 schools, our eight title schools were exactly in the same situation that we're describing with the needs of the kids in Detroit, but it kind of got buried. And I think if we're not careful as, we're not careful, we need to be careful to help redesign a system that meets their needs, even if they, even ironically, if they happen to be buried in what seems to be a highly proficient district. That's the beauty of why we wanted to get on the table today.
The subgroups.
The subgroup. That's why Joseph and all of us had discussed Friday, you know, okay, if we can't, if it ends up that we can't do the AYP thing, how do we get at the subgroups in a way that doesn't take us all off the hook from top to bottom? And I think that's at least one way, you know, there's other ways as well. So, I say this because it's, the Detroit-centric discussion is helpful to get to a broader redesign that impacts, you know, 2 million kids ultimately, and so I appreciate that, that commentary coming that way, that we can do this collaboratively and think about it as a system change. And then I commit to you, we'll, today, you know, we'll, as best we can, get this moving. I hear the informal comment that Dan's making, there may be a way we can, where I'm a little, if I, I don't know if I should say this directly, but because of our, the one clear role we do have in '72 on the deficit elimination plan, perhaps puts us in a bit of an awkward spot to criticize specific decisions on that count, because there's pretty specific language that as long as they're making the decisions, then we have to stay out of them, as long as they're producing a deficit elimination plan that, that works. On the other hand, that's why today I thought, well, our, our entree in the best sense is through the IEP. So, you know, we'll, we'll think, we'll be thoughtful about all this later today.
When does the deficit elimination plan do for you?
Came in at 6:00 last night.
Oh, it did?
Yeah.
Oh, so it's.
The most recent one. The most recent one. I mean, we rejected, I don't know if that's the right word, but we sent back with some, Carol, maybe you want to speak to that, so it's with more clarity.
We gave the district, as we do with many districts who are in key meetings in January until January 10th, to submit their deficit elimination plan. They did shortly after 6:00 last night, so they met our deadline. We've been reviewing it all day to see what's good and what, where we still have questions. There's still some questions in it, but staff is working on it as we speak.
Well, do you get into the specifics, like he's laying off?
Yes.
The lowest-paid people, and he's hired high-paid consultants?
We get into that as much as the budget gives us, but yes, we've got information. There's some disparities in numbers, dollar numbers and staff numbers, so we need clarity.
I'd like to do that fast because I want to, I want to protect the kids on the buses.
We'll be done by today and a day.
I'm frustrated again, I just, what's, what's some evidence that we're going to do something fast about that, and other things, but that's, that's crucial, what I think, because it's potentially dangerous.
I get that, it's just, we can only deal within our authority.
Okay, so.
And I'm, and I'm saying, we don't have the authority to make judgments about the specifics of his plan if it adds up to a plan that gets them out of deficit. He could choose, I don't, I have no idea, I haven't seen this, but he could choose whether we agreed with it or not, what some are terming high-paid consultants and eliminating others. We would have to, if it met the bottom line, accept that. The issue that I think gives us an entree on this situation is because separate, even if they weren't in deficit, the issue that was brought up by Citizens today is a severe one based, that helps us make an entree through the IEP, so I'm, it's confident.
That was very helpful because that is a, that definitely was the investigation.
That part does, but I guess also what I'm saying is, is the law, the PA 72 doesn't allow us to make a value judgment between, I wouldn't have made that cut, Bob, I would have made this cut, as long as he's making a decision that gets us, gets the district out of deficit within a period of time. And that's been a hard one for us to defend, if that's the right word, because it looks as though, and you heard a little bit of it today, like, well, why aren't we just telling them what to do? We don't have the authority to just tell them what to do. You know, that, that's just it in a nutshell. So, I mean, talk about frustration, we have the same one. I do think one thing we've learned from this, I'll give you a specific example, is this experience has told us that we, until PA 72 is cleaned up, for instance, we have three districts right now, we've told them point-blank, if they don't give approvable deficit elimination plans by February something or other, last I remember, maybe it's a little sooner, we'll hold their state aid. Last year, we did that, as you know, with one district in Oakland County. We usually end this room, Carol leads this, I come in for part of it, there's usually the, the president of the board, the superintendent, presidents of unions, so they all kind of hear the same message, and then to their credit, last year, and it looks like, I hope to the credit of a few of these that are in this spot right now, they go back and hash it out and do what they have to do to, to bring in a budget that's approvable. But we, but a little bit of the frustration is, I share the same one, sometimes you look at the plan and yourself, and part of it is, I've been a superintendent, I'm looking and thinking, I wouldn't make that cut, I'd make this cut, but.
That isn't our.
Can't do it.
No. Okay.
That's the part that, sorry if I'm beating that to death, I'm just trying to have clarity about what our authority with is in that. And that's one of the dangers, I think the Senator referred to, was, this isn't about Robert Bob, my statement right now is not about Robert Bob, it's that, that, that law, once you exercise it, gives this tremendous authority to one person, and basically the only, I'm not saying he's, I don't want to comment on his, I, I'm not in a position where I should comment or can comment on his ability, but what I'm, what I would say is that let's just hypothetically say an EFM was put into District X and they were totally out of control, the only authority is for this, for the governor to fire the person. There's, there's virtually no in-between, and that's another reason this 72 needs, there needs to be some in-between there, that it's not just a matter of fire or no progress, and, you know, it's, probably enough said. And I hope I was clear there, I'm not talking about this situation because I can't or shouldn't.
Could I ask a question with regards to this? And I'm, I'm very sorry, I evidently ran into an ATT glitch on getting back to you. It was very frustrating, and I'm sorry I missed the bulk of the conversation here, but with regards to what people were saying this morning on, with regards to special ed students, who is accountable and how do we get any sort of a report on how special ed funds are being spent and to know whether the children are properly being served and whether, whether their needs are being met in what appears to be a very non-equitable In what appears to be a very non-equitable way?
Mary Ann, I think.
That should be within our.
We, you missed, Mary Ann, this is John, you missed our discussion about, that is one area where, you know, Mike and the department have some clear opportunity to wade in and figure out what's going on with special education funding and staffing, et cetera. And Mike promised to, within a month or less, you know, they'll figure out what's going on, is there a real issue there and what we should do about it?
Okay, so it's, we're not just looking at the IEP situation, but at a broader special ed view.
Well, well, we're looking, I don't know if you caught Director White's comments earlier, but she's already got some fairly significant investigations slash improvements going on with special ed since 2008 in Detroit. And was it, was an employee of Detroit at one time in her past career. But the specifics of this one, if you heard her earlier, requires a specific complaint.
No, I didn't, I missed it all.
Okay.
I tried for an hour to get back to you, and I just was not able to do it.
Well, Mary Ann, the only thing I'm.
I missed, I missed that.
I think you'll be satisfied with, with the report that we can give on resolving this issue. The only thing I wanted to be clear about is, there, it's broader than it is on a financial manager, but it's not totally open. It's got to be based on specific complaints, or in the case of our folks in there right now, since 2008, on some very specific, long-term remedies that we've been seeking from Detroit. And maybe we can get a summary of that, maybe that's a way to start. We can get a summary of what some of that is, in addition to the IEP issue, and get that to the board, and maybe that'll. But I also want to say, kind of in the spirit of the almost 2 million that aren't in Detroit, this is what I'm saying goes on every day in our special ed division, probably in ways that are, are less obvious, just because it's a, it is one of the clear functions we have as a state, you know, is to, is to be these protectors, really, of, of the rights particularly of kids with special needs. And so I think, we'll try to do that, we'll try to put a report that gives.
Mary Ann, we, we probably need to move on, given the snow, but we also agreed that we would, as a board, collaborate on developing some advice and statement of the broader sense of direction for Detroit moving forward, fiscal, leadership, et cetera, but we would do so in, exactly in the way that Dan described, Dan and others, you know, we need help on how to do this well, getting good input from folks who have staked in that discussion, but that we should do that, and we pledge to do it, counting on our four Detroit board members too, to provide their opinions and perspective as we go ahead.
Okay, I, I've given, and a great discussion and action that's going to come from this, and that would have been, that wasn't going to be my report, but that's instead of my report. So we have two items left, and if we can make those succinct, or, well, no, I don't want to step, one of them is Matenga's, and take the time you need, and then, and then, Lisa, when you come up, maybe as succinct as you could be. Yes, please.
This month, again, Happy New Year to everybody, and 2011 just kind of begs action. And I'm just incredibly energized by the discussions that I've heard today. And throughout the, especially during December, we have had many conversations as teachers, and I wanted to share with you some of the things that I've heard, and some of the things that teachers are talking about right now. So the conversation that we've had in December with some of our social network teachers, as well as the physical colleagues in the area, is the idea of failure as instructional, and it's very apropos since some of the, some of those topics were touched, touched upon today. And so I'm just going to be as short as possible today, because I realize that we're working on a time constraint. So I wanted to just talk about a little bit, you know, obviously, failure is instructional. But in our conversation restructuring some of our thinking when it comes to education, we didn't want to keep this point out of the conversation. And so the conversation that we've had with administrators, especially from the, the top down, is this idea of, you know, what are you doing about student failure? So I know in Grand Ledge High School, and all the departments, that last month, this was discussed, and not just in our school, but in many other schools in the state, what are the teachers doing about student failure? And so there's a big, it's almost a dilemma, because we want, you know, on the one hand, we, we want to know what everybody is doing about student failure and the amounts of failure, but, and so it's a constructive, it's a very constructive conversation, because it's forced many of us to adjust our lessons, it's forced many of us to differentiate instruction, as well as to really take a hard look at some of the accommodations that we've had in the past. And however, the big debate is, you know, should we allow students to fail? Or is the social stigma of failure too difficult a lesson for children today to learn? And so we are left in this fog right now, on, you know, which way do we want to go? So in a culture of helicopter parenting and uber-supervisions of schools, we've removed many of life's experiential learning experience, experiential learning tools, in an effort to protect the children. And so now, and today, we saw some of the results of these, the lack of experience, of life experiences that these children are suffering from, thus, we're not, we're failing to reach them in that sense. Students exist today in a culture where the right answer in a bubble sheet determines their worth for life. I have students who, I have one particular student who, because of an illness in the family, of one of the parents, you know, she has to take care of her younger siblings, she drives them to their, their appointments, she has to pay the bills, there's a lot of life skills that she does. However, because she's not, she does not perform well in school, she thinks of herself as not smart enough, she thinks of herself as being stupid, she cannot, you know, she does not qualify for the mathematics and the science, she can't pass those classes, but she has very definite life skills. And those are the skills that she will need for the rest of her life, rather than just that particular geometry proof. What, you know, so we're, we're creating a situation right now, or we're existing in a situation right now where kids are, their entire, they're, they're being directed by these bubble sheets, and this particular result in the bubble sheet. Also, some of the accommodations that we've had, and some of them, not all of them, have relegated some of our failing students to well-meaning programs, however, that have, that tend to breed codependency, and they, instead of providing the therapy. I have students who have been in a system with a disability, with especially a learning disability, or, for eight years. So they're now in ninth grade, and they're still in the same category as they were back when they were in first grade, so it's not therapy. Failure is a catalyst for understanding, and I know everybody in the room, I can speak from my own experiences, that some of my biggest life lessons came from terrible disappointments, and telepathic failure on my part. And the fact of life is, there are so many things that the students are, that contributes to student failures, that right now, as a, as a school, we cannot really control. And like a student's home life, and you can see there are systemic issues that, you know, are very, very difficult to control. However, as teachers, we're talking about this issue of teaching survival skills, more so, so that the students, like, you know, by allowing the students to fail, and, you know, we create, and by creating a process where the students can fail, and creating a process where we can not just fail, but also learn from their failures, you know, they can learn better a second time. We do not have a system where they can learn from the rinse and repeat that life offers. And there is a rewind button, in the sense that you can just try it again, just do it again, just do it again. Instead, we saw today the frustration of a parent whose child has been, you know, socially advanced, and the child did not learn, did not get that chance to rinse and repeat. If, if you allow the students to learn to deal with failure, instead of just water down the, or, or adjust their, their, their journey, they can learn to understand their weaknesses. And the conversation with us as teachers, we feel that if we can just teach the children to manipulate failure, or to understand failure, so that they can do something about it, we are in then educating the whole child. So it's not just the content, but just this idea that, you know, it's okay to fail, just go back and do it again. So right now, as teachers, we feel very frustrated in the sense that we just don't have that parameter. There's only 12 years that, you know, the, their education is paid for, for 12 years, so a student repeating and repeating and repeating is very difficult for, for us to understand how we can create a system where failure is okay. So there's a couple of things that I wanted to, for us to consider, as we're building this new system. And this, and again, this is a general tool, these are bullets that I have found from our conversations, and one is school as a tool for economic development, and not just as a requirement. And if we can think about that as we're creating this new system. Also, creating a system right now, the system is, we, we are teaching students, because we want them to be leaders of tomorrow, yet not everybody's cut out to be a leader. And there's a nobility to the jobs that sustain the structure, the infrastructure of our nation, that we're not training the students to look at as an option. Instead, we're talking to them, like, oh, you can do anything, you can be anything, you can, and we are putting them in this path where failure is, it's, it's, it's not manageable, and so we find ourselves in these systems. And so therefore, instead of accommodating these failures, if we just, you know, create a system where the students can not only take and fail, but also learn what to do with that failure. And I wanted to share that with you, it's an incredibly good discussion that we're having, and where to put the failure, and how to create a system where it's okay to fail and not seen as a stigma, but as a learning tool. Thank you for your time, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent insights. Thank you. Lisa.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I just have a couple of updates from the time of the report that I wanted to give you. Number one, at the federal level, was that Congressman Tim Wahlberg, who, Republican, recently re-elected, he'd been in Congress before, is going to be the Chair of the Workforce Protections Subcommittee of the House Education, it's Health, House Health, Education, Labor and Pensions Committee. And so that's another position where Michigan may have some influence, in addition to the two I mentioned, which were Dave Camp and as Ways and Means Chair, and Debbie Stabenow as Chair of Agriculture. So that's one more place where we'll have to remember, a good place to provide a little bit more influence and a little more Michigan perspective to the committees at the federal level. The Senator, at the state level, you know, the State Senate has named their membership, and it's available online, I think I gave you the chairs, which was all that was named at the time I wrote the report that you have. The House has not named theirs, other than appropriations, which is Representative Chuck Moss, that's expected to be released tomorrow, the, the State House. You know, there's names being bandied about, but there's 60 freshmen, and if you remember last time, Representative Melton was a freshman, was named, to the surprise of everybody, as Chair. So while Representative Scott and Representative McMillan are the two names that have been talked about, we just don't know if there's a dark horse out there, so to speak, some freshman member that perhaps they see as a, having real leadership capabilities, and that he may step up in it. The only other thing is to note, is on ESEA reauthorization, that the national groups are really working to pull together input from their members in preparation for the ESEA reauthorization. I know CCSSO, the Chief Counsel of State School Officers, just recently asked for input from all the states. There's a Federal Liaison Network, which is a group of all the people like me all over the country. There's a web, I mean, a phone meeting this week to try to give us some more information, so I may have more after that. But I also know that NASB, the groups that, that you work with, and some of the other national associations, are really now actively looking for comments and more input. The, the biggest push that they're doing seems to be to tell Congress, do it now, not later, and for flexibility. Those are the two things that you'll hear over and over and over again. I know CCSSO has also put an emphasis on the collaborative of the states, in terms of like the common standards, which we're already ahead of, as we've already adopted the, the Common Core standard, the college and ready, college and career-ready standard. But to keep that in mind, as especially Mr. Zilei just was named as the NASB delegate, that, that'll be a key role, is providing, you know, input at, at the federal level on the ESEA reauthorization as it relates to Michigan. That's all I have, if you have any questions. How, I get like music, this is great.
Supposed to be enough.
That was my cutoff, the hook.
Yeah. Any questions for Lisa? Okay, thank you, Lisa. I know that some are anxious with the snow. Let's see, consent agenda, there is no consent agenda today, if I have that right? And our next meeting is February 8, and I think agenda planning meeting is being rescheduled a little bit, but to do in combination of everyone, if I'm understanding. Anything else from board members? Yes, Cassandra?
Two quick items. One, the Civil Rights Commission is doing a public forum on bullying on January 25th from 4:00 to 6:00, and they're taking oral and written comments. And I thought it'd be nice if someone from the Skateboard of Education wanted to go present on behalf of the board. Second item, two years ago, we did a legislative meet and greet, and I was just curious if we're doing that again.
Yeah, we have the date, and.
Sorry, we said succinct, and I was going so fast, I'm so sorry. I sent out an email with February 15th as a save the date. This is actually a training seminar for new members. And at the start of it, I've asked our new board president, John Austin, to come and provide an opening, a welcoming to the members, and then there'll be specific seminars from staff on various issues. It's really a sort of an in-depth crash course for the new members on different areas. And then.
It's going to be over at the.
It's in the House Office Building. We're trying to make it so that we get as many members as possible. It's in their building, we're going to serve them with the lunch we can afford, so I hope you like that one. It's not as fancy as some of the other ones.
You'd be in jail.
Right.
And if each of you can make it, we would, I think it would send a, we'd be positive.
Absolutely. You'll be getting, I sent out a save the date, the invitation is going out tomorrow.
Okay.
What, what time will that be?
Yes, with all the specific details.
It's here somewhere, right?
It's February 15th at the House Office Building, from 10:30 to 1:30.
Is there anyone who wants to or can do the bullying conference?
I'm happy to do it if no one else is interested, it's right down the street from where I work, so.
I've been asked to go to a conference on after-school programs.
I'd need more information on the bullying. Okay, we'll, we'll spread that around, Cassandra sent that to me.
Yeah.
Yeah, whoever wants to do it, it's fine. What time is it going to be, where?
Yeah, I've been asked to.
In Detroit.
To, invited to attend a conference on after-school programs, sponsored by the Mott Foundation. And it's, it's in Florida, they, they have.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so it's, it's that date.
Oh, it's the same day?
25th or.
Yes, the 25th.
Yeah.
Right, so, but that'd be great if you could cover that bullying conference, I just
saw that in the paper.
Sure. Or if there's someone else who wants to do it too, that, you know, whoever wants to.
I was invited to the after-school thing too, and sorry, I can't make it.
Yeah, I'm glad I can.
Elaine, please.
I just wondered if there's a date and a time yet for the agenda setting.
The revised time is tentatively Thursday, the 20th, at 1:00 p.m. So everybody should signal, Marilyn will send a communication out, signal if you're planning to come, so we can configure how we need to do it.
And there's an issue, let's see, because Richard is new, and I am not quite conversant on this, if we reach a quorum, this is not binding decisions, these are not board actions. So if we reach a quorum.
The question is, can we have a quorum with some people on the phone, as long as we call, if we post a meeting?
Yeah.
If we're not taking any action, which I think is permitted under the Public Meetings Act. But we, this is something we need to check, because we can anticipate a scenario where we have, have a quorum, which we know we need to post it.
Uh huh.
Which is fine.
Then we do.
Then we do, agenda planning, but I think if we are taking any votes, then we have to have five members in, physical members there.
Right.
So could, could you check on that?
Yes.
And we can make that part of the, otherwise, it, it can be then very easy, if it's the way we think it is, to accommodate those who are interested. And we'll be working, obviously, with your all's help on communications, planning, looking ahead, what we do next, so more to come.
Right, and I'm thinking that it could be.
board meeting, we might be bringing forward and saying, can you get answers on these kinds of things? So.
Yeah, the, the agenda planning meeting is not a decision-making.
Correct.
So, I think it's legal, so it's posted, and it's open, and anybody can.
If we have a quorum, but let's check, let's double check on our systems and our legality, so we're knowing exactly how we need to work with.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds great. Anything else?
I want to just say, I thought it was a great meeting, I'm proud to be associated with you, I thought there were appropriate discussions and comments, and, you know, really healthy stuff today.
The governor stopped interrupting.
Yeah. Like we have all the time in the world, I mean, he's not driving home to this.
I hear he has a driver.
I could say one more thing, I just wanted to tell all of you, that the, listening to the governor, it dawned on me, looking at the election sheet, that we could have a co-presidency. And if I'd thought about it before, I really didn't, but it just seemed like such a strong proposal for where we have to head, and the fact that we're facing this Republican legislature and, and governor, that I just thought, let's put that on the table. So I apologize that I blindsided everybody, because I actually blindsided myself. And next time, I shouldn't have my, I had my paperwork, I read it before, and I just thought, wait, what a cool idea that that would be, so I apologize.
Thank you.
Well, I think we can make a good case for a, a party.
Okay, well, Happy New Year, and be safe driving.